So, welcome everyone for being here this evening. Tonight is designated to bring Logan residents together for a thoughtful, forward-looking discussion. The candidates will each give a three to four minute introduction and identify a priority for Logan's future. At this time, I would like to recognize our candidates that are here on the stage. For Logan City Council candidates, we have Brian Siemens, Katie Lee Coven, Melissa Dally, and Ernesto Lopez. For our mayoral candidate, we have Mark Anderson. Alana Knappier unfortunately did not be here because she has COVID. So she sends her regards and says that if you would like to have more information about her and her and her stance on things, you can go to her website at ala.nnaformayor.com. Those of us who need the microphones. Is this one working?
Let me see if it's working. Is this working? Yes, it is. These mics are directional, which means you have to hold them just like that. If you don't like that, they go away.
Okay. Thank you.
She's used the mic. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. Okay. So I have the pleasure of introducing our moderator this evening, Dr. Damon Kane. Dr. Damon Kane is an award-winning researcher and teacher who is currently a professor in the Department of Political Science at Utah State University. His book on congressional campaign finance, Sharing the Wealth, won the 2009 Richard Dennis Jr. Prize for the Best Book on Legislative Studies, published in 2008. His 2015 book, Voter's Verdict, won the 2016 Virginia Gray Book Award for the Best Book on State Politics or Policies. His articles have been published in a variety of journals, including the Journal of Political Research Quarterly, American Politics Research, State Politics and Policy Quarterly, and Public Choice. His commentary on politics has been sought by a range of print, radio, and television outlets, including The Washington Post, Salt Lake Tribune, KSL, and the Salt Lake Media Markets ABC affiliate. He's a major advocate of academic public engagement. Dr. Kane previously served as mayor of North Logan City. It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Damon Kane.
Thank you to everyone for coming out tonight. It's wonderful to see you. I'm mindful of the fact that none of you have come to see me, but rather the people that are most important on this stage are those beside me who have a desire to serve by running for elective office here in Logan City. I want to express my thanks to the Cash Valley Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event, to the Utah Theater, and the folks in the organization surrounding it for making tonight possible by making this facility available. Most importantly, I want to thank the candidates who have come to be here tonight to engage in this discussion. As we begin, I want to make sure I give a little bit of context, because rather than going for a traditional debate that you might see on a cable TV show, the rules of the evening are more oriented towards stimulating the kind of environment of substantive policy discussion and group decision-making that will actually be the format that members of city councils, mayors, and other elected officials use to try to move public policy forward and get things done on behalf of the people. So, thank you to the candidates who have agreed in advance to the following principles for tonight's discussion, and we ask that the audience adhere to these principles as well. First, respect. Listen with care to others and speak with civility. Second, optimism. We want to focus on ideas and solutions for Logan. Third, fairness. We'll share time and space so that all voices of our candidates here can be heard. Fourth, no personal attacks. The discussion is not about people. The discussion is about policies and ideas. And fifth, if time allows us to take questions from the audience, the questions should be concise and clear and asked in the spirit of policy improvement rather than a targeted attack at any of the candidates. So, with that in mind, we'll begin with opening statements of three to four minutes from each of the candidates so they can introduce themselves, talk about why they're running, and share an idea, if they would like, for things we can do to improve our community. Opening statements will come first from the city council candidates, followed by our mayoral candidates. I randomly selected the order in which those opening statements will go, and that order will be first Katie Lee Coven, second Brian Siemens, excuse me, third Melissa Dally, fourth Ernesto Lopez, and then on the mayoral candidates, Mark Anderson will give his introductory statement last. We send our best wishes to mayoral candidate Alana Knappiger, who is, as was previously mentioned, ill tonight and unable to attend. When we get to the time for the two-minute closing statements at the end of the evening, we will repeat that order, so you get the first word or towards the front end, or the last word or towards the end, but you don't get the first and the last word of the debate. So that rotation will hopefully help us to be fair in the timing that we have for that. So first, we'll go to opening statements. If you see me, audience members pull out my cell phone. It's not because I'm checking my text messages in the middle of the debate, it's because I'm running a timer while we're at it. With that in mind, yeah, baseball. Ms. Lee Coven, if you would go first for your four-minute opening statement.
Hi, I'm Katie Lee Coven, and I want to help preserve the parts of Logan that we cherish and improve areas where we fall short. With my experience as an executive director and service on various city committees over the past few years, I feel very prepared and informed to take this role and make a positive impact. I have served as chair at the Hillcrest Neighborhood Council for the past four years, and am a founding member of the Public Art Committee for the City of Logan, and a member of the Logan General Plan Steering Committee. In these roles, I have helped improve communication about city-related projects to Hillcrest neighbors and advocated for them as well. Professionally, I served as the executive director of the More Echo Harrison Museum of Art at Utah State University, and that role, I've managed multiple multimillion-dollar capital campaigns. I oversee policies and procedures and staff. I've expanded our community in case through trials and engagement to serve every school in Logan and Tash School Districts, and to ultimately create a welcoming space for all. I am married. My husband, Mark Lee Coven, is here tonight, and we have a nine-year-old daughter in the Logan School District, and we love Logan. Some of the issues that I care about include affordable and diverse housing, collaborating with Utah State University to create more student housing, ensuring fiscal responsibility and transparency, including communication with residents, and backing a new multi-purpose indoor recreation and community centers, and partnerships with the county. I also care about water and energy resources and that are sustainable for future generations. We were asked to share one priority. For me, it's housing. Logan has 18,700 housing units. Thirty-eight percent of those are owner-occupied, compared to 70% in Utah. A third of those are multifamily housing, which is 25% higher than the U.S. average. USU has 20,000 students on its campus, and housing's about 3,500 of them. Housing in Logan has been a perennial issue for many, many years. It is not a new issue, and I don't think we can solve this issue of increasing homeownership and affordable and diverse options if we don't cooperate with USU and get creative both with private partnerships and the university to figure out how to expand more housing for students. You can't have housing for 3,500 students when there are over 20,000 and expect to make a dent in Logan City housing availability and affordability. But as someone who worked for USU, has relationships with a lot of our leaders at USU and legislators, I feel well positioned to try to make a dent in that and see if we can make some headway. In closing, while I bring experience to this role, I am not an expert in all areas that the council is responsible for, and I want to hear from you as citizens, not from the experts, so that we can come up with the best solution. So with that, I will stop and just thank the chamber, thank Utah Theater, and thank all of you for wanting to be informed and engaged and make a good vote.
Next up, we will hear from Brian Siemens for four minutes. We're going to slip down and give you a one-minute signal. That was like within two seconds of your exact time.
Can I use your table? I brought an object demonstration, a weapon, not a weapon, some sort of a weapon. My name is Brian Siemens. I'm a native of Cache Valley. I grew up in Hyde Park. It sounds like an Indian word. Attended Mount Press, graduated from Utah State, where I studied economics. I've met my wife there. We live on the island now. We have three boys, 21, 19, and 7. And while I'm running, my primary concern, or one of my primary concerns for them beyond their health and safety, is the cost of living and the cost of housing in Cache Valley in Utah. Fifteen years ago, you may all remember this, I'm not telling you anything new, but this is to represent my purse, so you know. This is my purse, this is your purse. This, economically, I'd like to use guns and butter. I didn't think guns would be appropriate to make stuff. I'm talking about it. This is bad. Anyway, fifteen years ago, this would have represented the government's share of butter. This is representing the government's share of butter now. My question for you would be, has your income grown up that much? Now, that's the smallest government share, because that's groceries. If you want to buy your little boy a new coat, that would represent the government's share. If you want to go out to eat, then you would have that. And my concern is, now, I'm a builder now, and I've seen two different studies on our local policies, national local policies, and the effect they have on the cost of housing. And it would surprise you that the most expensive, I don't think I could stack these coins I have, to represent the cost of local government on the cost of housing, and it's somewhere between 20% and 40%. But the things that we do and decisions that we make stack with higher. Like, this is, we're not at 10%. If you wanted to get to 40%, we wouldn't need to be there. If we want to work on the cost of life and living, it starts here, and it's very critical. And what you'll hear over the next few years is someone will come to you with a new idea, and they'll say, hey, we need this, and it's only going to cost you that, and we need this, and it's only going to cost you that. But you know what? That never stops. That grows forever. And then they're going to come back to you and say, you remember what we did 10 years ago? We're going to fix it up, and it costs that, and we got to continue to maintain it. We got to work on it that way. Oh, by the way, we did this. Oh, we forgot to tell you about it, and it's going to cost you this. But we made a mistake. We thought this would happen, and it was a mistake, and it went like this. And pretty soon, we're all servants to this debt that we've accumulated. What my total focus and reason for running is, is this needs to stop if it can. I'd like it to go backwards a little. That's how we help our kids. Thank you.
Siemens. Next up, we have Melissa Dally.
My name is Melissa Dally, as I stated. I am a resident of Cache Valley. I have been my whole life. I graduated from Skyview High School, got my bachelor's degree from Utah State University in Business Information Systems, and we're at Newton, so this is my area. For the past 22 years, I've called Logan home, the place I truly live and am dedicated to serving. And over the last decade, I've worked to help Logan grow stronger through active community involvement and leadership. I served as chair of the Woodruff Neighborhood Council for about six, seven years, I can't remember exactly, but with that, I helped develop the 10-year Neighborhood Plan for Woodruff Neighborhood. I also advocated for safer streets and sidewalk for our students who were walking through the elementary, and made it a priority to listen to both residents and developers when big changes were proposed. I firmly believe in hearing both sides of an issue before making a decision. Education is also a cornerstone of my service. I have served on every school community council that my children have attended. I'm currently serving as chair of the Mount Logan Middle School Community Council and Logan High School Community Council, where we work as coaches and administrators and teachers of the school to ensure that land trust funds are used responsibly and effectively to help schools succeed. I also serve, as you can tell, I have this issue with saying no to people, I also serve as chair of the Logan City Parks Administration Board. I've been on that board for three years, but served as chair for the last year, and this is currently my second year. Through this role, I've seen firsthand about a world that recreation, parks, and trail play in our communities' health and quality of life. I'm committed to continuing that growth, not just for families, but for individuals and seniors as well. My husband Lynn is here tonight as well, and we are proud parents of so wonderful children and one daughter-in-law. Our oldest son is 23, and we have a 20-year-old, and a 16-year-old, and a 12-year-old. So as you can see, I have a big range of children in my life. I understand the needs of growing families, and I know how important it is to have a city that supports and serves them well and plans for a responsible future. And part of that is being involved in the schools and having a relationship with our schools, our school districts, to see if it helps build our communities, and when we have students that are attending the schools where they live. I'm running for Logan City Council to bring responsive, transparent leadership that reflects our shared values. I believe in open communication, and I want to help make it easier for residents to feel heard and involved. Communication builds community and helps us feel united. Thank you for being here tonight. I really appreciate you coming out and getting informed. Your engagement matters, and I hope as you head to the ballot box that you don't dilly and you vote for Dally.
Hi, my name is Ernesto Lopez, and I'm currently on the city council, and I'm looking or hoping to be re-elected to continue for four more years. I've been fortunate to be able to serve on the city council, first as an appointee, and then winning an election back in 2021. I am not allowed to move to the U.S. I'm an immigrant. I grew up in Mexico, in Tijuana, Mexico, and I moved to Southern Idaho back in 96. And then shortly after that, I came to Logan to go to college in 99, and I've been here since then. So I do consider myself a Loganite, because I've been here for the rest of my life, and I've come to modern value, our valley, our community, and I, my wife is here, and my kids, we all contribute to this community one way or another. I have two college kids, I mean, a few, and love them, and I love all of you, and later we'll probably get to talk a little bit more about that. I have a history of serving our community beyond the city council, through church, through schools, programs. I worked for Bay Harbor Head for more than 10 years, and I've been at USU now for almost over six years, leading a team of producers' online courses, making education accessible to the community. A lot of the research-based content that the university produces ends up being put together into online courses for our community, and that's what I do. I, if I'm elected, I hope to continue to emphasize the need to continue to work on housing affordability. I would love to continue to advocate for a more sustainable future with energy and water, and I also would hope to continue to encourage people to get more engaged in our process. I think that's probably one of the highest levels of things that we have in our system and our process, and I would love to encourage that more and more. Thank you.
Next up, mayoral candidate Mark Anderson.
Thank you for coming. This is a very exciting night, and we tried to put something different together, that's just not on a meet-the-candidate night, but something that inspires discussion and gives you thought. A couple of years ago, I was able to visit with Stan Chekis. If you don't remember Stan Chekis, he founded S&amp;S Power Store. He has roller coasters all over the world. He was a major investor into not just our community, but into Logan as well, too. And he came to my place because I have a marvel of engineering in our business that Stan was so in love with the first time he saw. And he came over to visit one day, and he said, can I have a look at that as a true flashback room? And so they were talking and visiting, and he was telling me about some of the projects that he had going on, and he was telling me about all these different, he was like, Stan, how do you do all this stuff? It's like you're so busy, you've got so many things going on, how do you do it? And his response was, if there's something you need to get done, you get the busiest person that you know to do it, and then you'll get it done, and they'll get it done right. And as I thought about that, I thought about Mike Bone, and you've been pretty busy putting stuff together. There's people that are like that. I thought about myself, and it's like, am I that person? Because that's what Stan said when he said that. He said, you get the busiest person, I'm that person. All right? I thought about it, it's like, okay, I've got two businesses to run, I've got a family, I've got a wife, I really would do things with, I love working together with her. I've got two kids at USU, I've got one who's trained to be a pilot in the Air Force, I've got one, his family's trying to get here from Arizona. And I understand, first hand, how difficult it is to sell a house and to buy a house in this market. I get it. I've been on city council for six years. Center Street is not our baby, but we are involved in Center Street. Anderson Center Street, that's us, that's us making that happen. I'm also serving on the Cache Water District, as you all see. I don't need another job. I don't need another job as mayor, but guess what? I am that person. I am that person. All right? Why, why am I running for mayor? It's like, I love a challenge. Throw a challenge at me, I will try and find a way to beat it. So there's so much to learn as mayor, and I find it exhilarating and exciting to learn new things, to meet new people, and to be, just to be a part of it. It's so exciting to have so many great opportunities ahead of us, ahead of the city and of the community, and I'm excited to be a part of that. I'm going to tell you, a mayor is not an entry-level position. You have to, you have to have some experience to do this. I am so excited about this administration in Logan, and I really want to be a part of that, and I want to keep the ball rolling, because mayor does a great job at building our community and building what we need here, and I want to keep that ball rolling, because I feel like I've been a part of that on city council. I do want to keep serving my community. There's not many people who are willing to put the time in, who are willing to put their community above themselves. I'm that person. Logan needs someone with vision, someone with energy, someone with excitement, someone with drive, who's responsible, who wants to get things done, and who wants to work to make it better. I'm that person. I'm that person. I've heard of these things, that our community has about poor communication from the city, loss of trust, city top transparency dealings, I've heard all these things. As a business owner, my biggest role for the last 30 years has been communicating with our customers, building relationships, building trust, helping people find solutions. If you want communication, if you want someone you can trust, someone who's responsible and accountable, and a leader who builds and nurtures relationships, I'm that person. I've heard other concerns about Logan, that Logan's growing too fast, doesn't feel, and it doesn't have the community that it used to have. Some people just get left out, they don't feel like they're a part of what's happening. Did you go to the Pumpkin Festival? If you went to the Pumpkin Festival, that's part of the community. If you like serving in your city, that's part of being a community. I know how to build community, because I've been involved in all those projects. But if you want someone who can build community in our city, I'm that person. I've heard comments that Logan spends too much money on projects, they fund developers, that Logan employees are difficult, and they're not very helpful, or they just don't know what they're doing. All those concerns. That's what I do every day. I work with a budget, I work with expenditures, I know how much money we have, I know how much money we spend. Daily, I work with employees, we train them, we do incentives, we improve our customer experience on a daily basis. This is what I do. Daily, I work on my own customer service. You need an expert customer service to come find you, and I might pat myself on the back. This is what I do. If you want a fit and responsible city, with a budget that stays within budget, if you want the best kind of productive employee in state, I'm that person. I'm that person. Next, get out there and vote, and make your mark for mayor.
Thank you for the insightful introductions on what you each have to offer and what some of your priorities would be. As we move forward in the question and discussion section of the evening, we're going to go for a little bit more depth in a narrower number of topic areas, then we are going to try to cover every possible issue that you could be called upon to address if elected to these offices. So the first kind of module, or general area that we want to discuss and maybe have a couple of questions on is growth in Logan, and especially starting off first with discussion of housing. And I think how I'd like to proceed here is we're going to alternate who speaks first, give you up to two minutes. Don't feel the need to talk for two minutes if you don't have two minutes of stuff to say. We do hope for a chance that you'll be able to have dialogue with each other, so if someone has an idea and you say, hey, I like that, you know, we can develop that a little bit more, that might have been a great idea, I might take it in a little bit of a different direction, but we can kind of build on and exemplify good group dialogue and good group problem-solving issues. So for the first item, I'm going to start here with Mark and then work the way down. When we get to the second item, we'll alternate who goes first on each question, so it's not the same person who has that responsibility on each item. So to kick things off, housing affordability has become a growing concern in Logan. Several of you alluded to it in your opening statements. What specific policies or approaches would you support to help ensure that working families, students, and young professionals can come and live? What specific policies or approaches would you support when, uh, to help ensure that working families, students, and young professionals, uh, can come and live, work, and thrive in Logan City? Uh, Mr. Anderson first, please.
Thank you. Um, this is something I've discussed with all, a lot of the candidates already, especially Katie Lee, uh, Coben. We, we sat down and discussed it. And that partnership with you, with USU that you mentioned, I think is, is so important. Because we've got to start at the bottom of our housing and try and find a solution there. Because I, I really feel like there's an inventory of, of housing in Logan, but it's occupied by our students. And if we can find a, a, a place where our students want to come and they want to have a student experience, and they want to be able to park their cars and walk to school and walk to work and entertain themselves and, and go to the grocery store and maybe recreate as well too. Uh, we, we create that place that's less expensive than five hundred dollar a month for one room and probably a roommate in there in the same house, sharing a bathroom and a kitchen. Where we build something that they would rather go to. We can pull those students out of those homes that they have occupied because mom and dad decided this is a great investment. We're going to buy a house, we're going to put Suzie in there and Suzie's going to have two or three or four friends there. But then all their boyfriends and girlfriends are going to come over and there's going to be six or eight or ten there instead. Um, it becomes a problem for the neighborhood, it becomes a problem for our community. And those are starter homes that we could be, could be available for, for families to be in. We need to get our students where student housing is. And if we start there and we partner with Utah State, we partner with the state of Utah, and we partner with the, the federal government, and we get some developers to participate, we could create a place where three thousand, four thousand students could live. And all of a sudden we have an inventory of starter homes for a lot of people. Our residents too would like to buy a house. It's a problem. It's a real problem.
Uh, Ms. Lee Coben, uh, um, you feel free to respond, build upon, or offer new ideas as, as you, you, uh, think about housing affordability as a concern here in Logan.
Um, I, I briefly mentioned this in my intro, but the, the issue of housing, I was sitting in a Logan City Council meeting sometime in the last year, I don't remember when. And there were some slides that were being shown about top concerns of Logan City like forty years ago. Do you all remember? And that, and I, housing, that's what I mean, like truly, and not just, you know, conjecturing, like housing has been an issue for a long time. And USU is an incredible and critical part of our economy. And so we, we've got to figure that out. One of the things was that compound, has been compounding the issue that may be shifting a little bit is that, um, the, the universities in this state are, are, are measured. One of the metrics that they're measured on is growth. So every year, Utah State, one of the metrics that the Utah system of higher education and the legislature is grading them on is growth. So that means it compounds our issue. Logan is pretty unique because we have, people come here, students come here to have a residential campus experience, to live in a walkable or adjacent or nearby, right? Place. But that means the uniqueness of Logan being a small town with a college, uh, a, a small college town, that this issue is compounded each year. So we need to be talking to our legislature to talk about, and I know there was some of that conversation with the ADU consideration. Because there were concerns initially about how those impacts would, would blow over. Um, the other thing I would mention is that, you know, we're on, Logan City is about, I think fifteen square miles. You know, we don't have, in terms of growth opportunities, the thing, the, I would recommend you look at is the, the Logan General Plan. Because the, the, it's looking at what are our solutions for the next twenty-five years? What are our challenges? And a lot of community input has gone into that. And a lot of the things in this plan are to deal with this growth and how we would go about that. So it's not a new issue, but I think this is, there's a lot of detail in there and information and goals that are already being discussed and how it all works.
And our new general plan's coming out this fall. It's, it's getting close. And there will be some changes in zoning and there'll be some suggestions for, for housing. And then the, the state of Utah is putting out their affordable housing plan too. And they've, they've got about fifty points that are, are, are very productive and have been kind of agreed upon by, um, legislators and builders and, and people in the community where they, they've all put their support behind this. So I, I think it's going to be a really helpful document for our city, but they didn't take into consideration our student population as well too. So it's, it's missing from that plan partially, so.
Mr. Lopez, uh, your thoughts on housing affordability?
Yes, um, I think one of the most effective tools that we have at, uh, city council, and I, I've seen it being used in, in my time at city council, is, is zoning, right? Um, and unfortunately, we do have a lot of the not in my backyard type of mentality that, that is everywhere, not just here in Logan, in, in the entire valley, the entire state. A few years ago, I got to attend the One Minute Summit where it was, that was kind of part of the, the big, uh, message of, of saying, we, we need to do better at articulating why that is so damaging trying to tackle hu- housing affordability. And, and then another part that is, uh, confused to be missing is that middle housing, um, um, that, that, not the starter home, not the higher end home, but the middle housing. Because what ends up happening is that, because there is not enough of that supply, the starter homes become kind of the middle housing for, for some people. And so it, it's missing, it's, it's part of, of, of our problem. Um, I think they need to, you know, flexible with the, with how they're using zoning, uh, and, and just be better at kind of communicating what the benefits are. So that people that are feeling threatened by, you know, multi-family housing development or a smaller, single-family, uh, housing development, uh, doesn't affect them in a negative way that they perceive could affect them.
What do you mean by flexible though? You want, you need to be more flexible. What, what, what do you mean?
Well, one of the things that have happened in recent past is that planned development overlay that has given us the opportunity to look at big portions of, of, of land, uh, and think a little bit more creatively, you know, to maximize its use.
Steve, go ahead, please finish the thought that, that the time is there to kind of help us know that we, we, we can finish the thought, uh, but, but please do finish, uh, what, what you were saying. I don't want to cut, cut you off.
The, the point of all, I, yeah, the plan development overlay is allowing us to look at something beyond the, wha- what was intended to be used initially, uh, or what the general plan might have looked at. And, and we get to hear a proposal that is, is not developed, then just saying, I want to build a hundred multi-family units. Because then we're able to look at something and be like, okay, well, if, if a portion should be, uh, an MR nine or an MR twelve, but then a, a, another portion could be an NR six, six, um, uh, units break. And, uh, I mean, it, it really allows us to, I think, and one thing is to maximize the use of, of the land.
Just, just to clarify as well for people in the audience, and, and, uh, Brian, Melissa, we'll, we'll make sure you guys have plenty of time to weigh in on this is, uh, issue as well. Uh, the MR nine is something where you can consider at a greater level of detail, if I understand correctly, because that zone is not put in place until the council puts it there. It's, it's a density. Is, is that laid in advance of a plan being brought to the council? Or do they bring a plan and ask for that to be overlaid on the zone?
I would say both.
Do you want, do you want, I was thinking, do you want to answer or do you want me to answer or Melissa?
Melissa, Melissa, go, why don't you go ahead and share your thought about?
My sense of being a, you know, in the neighborhood chair in the, or, yeah, sort of what if neighborhood, is we made a plan for our neighborhood. We have those in our neighborhood and some of them are in our four, some are in our nine, some are more, some are less.
Explain them. So NR four means you can put four houses per acre. Nine means you can put nine per acre, fifteen means you do fifteen per acre.
Yeah. So we had that mix. And when we made the plan, we were kind of specific in that we wanted to keep it as a zone, you know? And so that's where developers will come in and they go, okay, well, this one's an NR four, but I want to make it an NR six that can provide a little bit more, you know, variety to my house and things like that. And so that's why I say both, because it's there, but then the developer can also come in and city council, planning commission can also change it.
Of course.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I want to make sure I give you a full, uh, full, uh, uh, I appreciate you engaging in that question. I want to make sure you get a full chance to share other ideas and thoughts that you'd like to, uh, on Ms. Dally as well. Please, you know, go ahead and take a, a couple of minutes.
Um, I mean, I agree with what has been said, a lot of it is with our students, you know, and getting more student housing available. Um, I think we also need to look at trends of society. Um, however, trends are maybe people are wanting big yards for their houses nowadays. And so let's look at building up. Um, I have the mountains and we love to see the mountains, so maybe not super high, but I think it's worth consideration to start looking at building up instead of out. Um, it helps maximize their space and provides, you know, spaces. And they can be bigger homes that are in developments that move up. We see that, you see that in bigger cities. And why can't we do that? And also provide, that helps alleviate traffic, um, throughout the city as well. Because we can build those, um, high-rise apartments, you know, not even, I don't want to call them high-rise because I'm not thinking high-rise. But, um, build them close to your necessary stores, like grocery stores and things like that. So it can help alleviate that traffic.
The conference I was just at, Clearfield has a problem because they are built out completely. They have no more property, they are surrounded. So where do you grow?
You have to go up.
You have to, you have to go up. But they have a lot of homes that were built in the fifties, so the properties were small to begin with. So it's, it's got a real problem because of the makeup of the city, just the way it was built.
Yeah.
So, so going up, you know, as a city, we've got a plan ahead and say, where do we want to go up? Where do we foresee as the best location? So that we're not throwing big high-rises in single-family home areas. And that's the whole, the whole purpose of zoning. But, you know, we've got to have a vision of what's going to work for our city and for our citizens that we can put in place. And hopefully, our master plan that's coming forward is going to help us with that.
Yeah, exactly.
Great insight. Uh, Mr. Stevens, uh, thank you for your patience. We all will take turns in, uh, at, at going earlier and later in these discussions through the course of the evening. But please, uh, your thoughts on housing and housing affordability?
Well, that, that happens to be my area of expertise. Um, I, that's all I do. And the first thing that we can do as a city is work on the structural issues that we have in housing. Um, eight years ago, I wanted to build some townhomes, which I think is probably the direction that most people want to go. Um, it's not too high, it's denser, and you can put them in certain places. My experience with students is that they want to be in townhomes. They don't want to be in, they like the millennial towers, it's just not them. The freshmen go there. I actually say that they're my, uh, number one advertising. They go live in the dorms or they go live in millennials, they go live in factories, and then they come to us because they don't want to live in a zoo. They, they'll go party at the zoo and then they want to come home and have a family style, right? That's the way it is.
It's true.
It's just the truth. Um, but it took me three months to commit a project in, in two thousand and eighteen. It's taken me over three years for the same thing now. It is unbelievably honorous to get through the city right now. We, we, and, and, and think of the cost that that incurs. When you got to pay an architect, when you got to pay your engineers, and then you got like six different engineers. You, we're not going to tackle this issue unless someone in the city wants to figure out how to accelerate that. Now, they have a really cool program in there. They, you submit, they put it through this program, they got two weeks to give you their list, uh, of, of all the things you got to do. And the list is like this long. And you go through and work on it, but there is no turnaround on that. And then they don't have any inner communication on that. And then the other point I want to make, so we need to work on that. And that's primarily why I'm running this, because we can zone it to death and it's just not going to work unless we work on how we administer these permits. Here's the other thing. We just dedicated six hundred feet of water line to the city. If you give me an opportunity to choose an oil well without new water line, I'm picking the water line every time. The oil falls from the sky, goes into the Duwitt stream, they pump it down that thing and they'll never have to service that for another hundred years. But guess what? Impact be felt in eight years. On a water line that they'll never touch again, that the plastic stat sits. It doesn't go anywhere like, like, maybe a common, a shelf key. They never touch that. It is not managed well. I, I, I should tell you why we're having to put in a seventy million dollar water tank. It's because of mistakes in the past. Um, those issues need to be tackled. Now, here's a structural problem. You wonder why we can't afford a housing and everybody's building apartments? Why would they build houses when they can build apartments on the same land and they're, you won't care? But the homeowners association is going to come together and sue them for maybe putting in ten years ago, it was bad Chinese drywall, right? And, and then, then it's, oh, we don't, we don't like the paint we put in. Oh, we decided there's lead in here, let's get together with all of our buddies. You know how they preempt that? They just don't sell them to you. And they turn it into rentals. And we're a better nation to have big landlords. So we need to address that, number one. I'm going to tell you another horse story and then I'll shut up. Who would not agree that Fourth North is all students? I proposed student housing on Fourth North and it came crashing down like a nightmare. Not big housing, not messy housing, uh, townhomes. I proposed townhomes on Fourth North and it lost a foot like I had supposed. I, I would know it, you can bet, bringing it down to student to be mayor of Logan. It was so bad, like I was like, are you, where else are you going to put students other than Fourth? And what family wants to live on Fourth? That is the backward thinking that needs to change if we're ever going to tackle it.
So how do we accelerate that process that takes so long?
Well, I was chatting with Brian, um, about the, he was sharing the, because he's a builder, he knows and deals with it.
Well, I got to tell you, and I love talking to, like, everybody agrees that we got to fix this and everybody's like, hey, let's put our heads together, you know, like, anyway.
Oh, and I, and I was like, I don't, maybe there are things like this in place already, but, uh, we, what is the incentive for employees to expedite, to, to maximize, you know, to be expedient with the administration of what we're doing? Are there incentives that we, and I say incentives because, I mean, as employees, what are the ways that we, um, support productivity, right? And, and a workplace?
I, I got to, I got to tell you, Katie, and, and not to be negative, the power department, oh my gosh.
We're not talking about, they're, 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 they're.
But that part is, I got to give their approval on a permit, but they are wobbling. Community development, give them a big old heart, but let's talk to the council, right? So.
So I, I feel like, uh, there's got to be ways we can improve and exceed, and incentivize more productivity to get, because that is unacceptable. When, when there are opportunities for development that have been approved and then there's this lag that we're, and we're just buying, you know, we're, and then, you know, we wait long enough and things change and then you've got to adjust and whatnot. And the only other thing I wanted to add is that, um, the neighborhood plans, which both Melissa and I having worked with neighborhood councils, um, you saw, each neighborhood has a plan. Uh, that is developed with the neighbors, um, and, and it looked at zoning and looked at projects and goals. And so all these neighborhoods have plans. At least you didn't know that, your neighborhood has plans. Um, look it up on this, if anyone has this. And I, and I, next up will be with this, with our Logan General Plan, which is a longer game plan that does have housing and growth and a lot of these. We've got to link those things together to make sure that these things are syncing up. Because what we don't want are visions and desires that the city overall is thinking ambitiously about in terms of density and addressing issues. But if they are not aligning and taking into consideration our neighborhood plan. So I think that's something that, just, and that is being proactive and thinking forward and not reactive. And I think that's a huge thing that we, uh, we can work on.
Uh, Mr. Lopez and Ms. Dally, I want to give each of you just a sec, if you have maybe a thirty second reaction to any of the conversations so far. a 30-second reaction to any of the conversations so far, just to kind of give you one more thought of this, and then maybe step back, step onto our next slide.
I wanted to maybe push back a little bit on something Brian said, which I think, I don't know if he said it like this, or he meant it to say it like this, but the idea that all students want to live in townhomes, townhomes. I think a lot of them, maybe probably do want to live in townhomes, but I think most importantly, people would want to provide a diversity of housing for them. Not just a kind of housing, but something that is listening to man well, maximizing his needs, but at the same time, that gives them a choice for something, whether that's apartments, or townhomes, or something else, whatever that maybe.
Well, we do. We do. And you'll notice, like, the dorms that the university provides, the kids after a year or two really don't like those. You know, a lot of them, they can't, they can't cook in. They don't do a very good job of cleaning them. They walk a mile and a half to park on them. They hear people all night long running up and down the hallway. So they think they want to live in the party. And that's what I was referring to. So we have that. Then we have, like, millennials. And we made a huge mistake on that a few years ago, where we let, you know why that's so big? Because they let them cut the parking in half. And can you imagine the money you could make if you only had to park half the people? You could double the size of your building and park half of them? I don't know what they'll concede the idea of that one. But now they've got to walk like three blocks to park in the gravel parking lots. But, I mean, we have a lot of diversity. Diversity isn't the issue. It's like Katie was saying, we need more of it, and we need to decide where we want to put it. You know, we can go higher, but you know what? That's so unbelievably expensive. Like, you look at the Nelson Brothers, they just went bankrupt on 800 north, or 800 blocks, and factories. It's unbelievably expensive. But the danger you have is when you rezone, there's a danger. I want to say something tomorrow. Oh, I'm on my own this time, sorry.
I was going to ask you another time, thank you. Sorry, I'm sorry.
I don't know if I have much more to add. I think we kind of, you know, hit all the points.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay. And I'm not a builder, but I know when we build our house, some builders are actually cheaper to go at. So I'm curious to know why it's more expensive to go up.
Well, you build a house or a townhouse, but once you pass that, then you meet all the, you have to meet all commercial codes. Like, you've got a fire sprinkler, you've got a HSA, you've got minimums, you've got elevators.
Egress, okay.
Oh, it's unbelievable. And then you just think of the engineering costs, of, you know, the taller you go, the structure of it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Townhomes and houses fit in a sweet little spot.
Before we go back to that process, like what Brian says, like, I think as a city, we've got to give people realistic expectations. You go in for a building permit, and they say, well, it's going to take four months. There you go. Four months, you know, when you're expecting a month, it's short. But maybe four's actually pretty quick. You know, it's like, we've got to give reasonable expectations upfront, so they know this process is going to take you six months. But our goal, as a city, should be to do it in four, so that it gets done two months early, so then everybody's excited about it.
What you guys have done, I don't know who I did it was, but you've done a great job on this. Like, we always put the idea of, you know, I don't know if it's called spot zoning. But we need spot zoning. If someone has a cruel idea, you know, and then the other thing is, is the cards are stacked against us in planning commissions. Like, if you could get right in front of the council that quick, but like, you go through planning commission, and then there's like five of them, and you're not allowed to talk to them. That's the craziest thing. You can't talk to the planning commission for some weird reason. And so they, and so the city, it's like, someone in the city doesn't like the idea that you've got them. They're allowed to talk to the planning commission, then they get them all against the idea, and then it goes to the project, and you haven't even gotten a boot camp. So.
One thing that I always think about is we, we don't have to create how efficiency can happen for those in cities with permanent. But what we can do is find the cities, whether they're in Utah, wherever, who are doing a really good job at it, and replicate what they do. You don't have to invent, you don't have to invent all the plans. Other people, some may just ahead of the game, but you just need to work out and see what is going to happen.
We can benchmark, so we can look at and say, okay, Clearfield City is awesome.
Right.
How we match that. And then we go, okay, South Warren, just like, they're amazing at this. We need to learn from that. And there's, like, that, that, that structure is in place. If we utilize the Utah League of Cities in town, that is built for that. So we can go to those cities, and we can partner with them, and we can say, hey, we need some, you guys are awesome at this. But we don't have a benchmark system in place where we can say, okay, Logan's number one at this. And everybody complains about it, but they realize Logan's the best at this, at what they do. Maybe that's life and power. Maybe it's something else. But nobody realizes that they're the best in state at it, but we have expectations that are much.
I think this is on you, Mark. Like, this is all on you. Like, if you win, like, I think it's on you. Like, and you work with your, with your administrative, and you're like, that. You know, but like, if you've got to complain, you're not going to go complain about Larry, because you're like, you've got to work for Larry.
It's not supposed to be like basic employee incentivization and culture. So if you don't have a benchmark to go for, how do you know what you're going?
So we're blaming affordable housing on Mark from now.
On that, yes. Take the blame. I think it's on Larry anyway, so.
One common thread I noticed across all of your answers is that each of you on the stage indicated that growth is inevitable. That the consequence of failing to build additional housing is housing costs and attainability becoming more and more difficult over time. So assuming that we have more housing and more people, and that actually seems like a safe assumption, the communities in this country that don't grow, that are contracting, have a set of problems entirely different, and in some ways more severe than the problems associated with growth. Then that sets a whole other set of issues in front of us to tackle, in terms of having sufficient water. Speaking with an individual who works in economic development at the countywide level, and across the northern Utah region, indicated that there are businesses who won't come to Cache Valley anywhere in the valley right now, because they have power needs that cannot be met in Cache Valley. And then there's road infrastructure. So all wrapped up in one question that will be easily answered in a hundred and twenty seconds like that. What needs to be the priorities and planning processes for Logan to meet the infrastructure needs that come with the growth that we all acknowledge is going to come? Ms. Lee Coven, we're going to have you start first. You don't feel an obligation to solve all problems? Do you have some ideas and thoughts? We'll work on, we can dialogue about each other's discussions, and we can add ideas fondly.
KVNU Logan.
I definitely feel like this is something I'd love to hear, both what Mark and Ernesto think, having been in city council and really immersed in this deeply. But, you know, we don't have infinite amount of resources. So there is, you know, there has to be an awareness and a consideration, which there is, from a city standpoint, on the capacity and the growth, trying to anticipate that growth and stay ahead of it relative to power and water. And there have been some contentious conversations over the past year, which we should talk about. Yeah, related to both of these, because the city's trying to anticipate and be ahead of it, so we don't have a crazy incident where we all go down. I will never forget, a couple of years ago, when, was it Hyde Park, one of our neighboring cities is two weeks out from not having water and a drought year. And I, I was shocked that that was right in our backyard. And I, and I mean that in that, gosh, those neighbors that are not part of city Logan, but they're right there, what kind of happen? Has that come to fruition? And we don't, I don't want that to happen, right? So it's, these are not easy. None of this is easy to achieve. And I think that there's got to be a lot of experts weighing in on this. And I am neither a water or power expert. And so there's a lot of learning curve, and I've done a lot of listening. And I think relative to the power, you know, really, that came down to feelings about what we need right now versus what we can hold on and sort of, and buy from the market, as I think collectively from the council. And so, I'll stop there. I need so much water, and I need all.
Let's just hope that, please.
Yeah, I mean, we must find our resources, right, especially with water. And I think we will need to pay more attention to what the, our department part comes in, the assessments of, of what is available down the road, what kind of growth we can support, and make hard decisions to address those. And listen, right, to our own friends, sometimes we make great plans, spend hundreds, thousands of hours and dollars on making great plans with the best intentions, but then we somehow decide to go in a different direction. And so I think it is important that we get a clear picture of what the limits are of our finite resources like water, and we make wise decisions that will set us up well for the future, for the community. Because we don't want the quality of life for everyone to change. And so if I'm on the council, I would have to say that, of course.
What people don't realize is Logan is envied by every community in the state because of the water source that we have. The water source that we have is one of the best, most reliable water sources in the state. And when we do that water line down Canyon Road, which nobody likes, but once we do that, that will fix our water problems for 50 years. Every growth that we can potentially foresee, every shortfall that we have in the city right now, places in the city where water is not good, it's going to improve all of this. So this is a huge project to, like, put us in position for 50 years that this will take care of every problem we've identified in the city.
Do we want to talk, talk about that, or?
Yeah. Give me a minute before we get there. On Canyon Road water line specifically, I think it's what you're.
Is that what you're referring to?
And our wastewater treatment facility, state of the art.
That's what I would agree with.
That's the one on other cities.
That they want that, they need that too.
And additional water.
Logan's place is positioned very, very.
I got to tell you, whoever it was in the past, we need to go to their grave and put flowers to hide up all the water.
Yep, we're loving that.
I don't know what you call them, you know, whatever.
The foresight.
Well, I think we can not talk too much about how much the water is, don't want everybody to know. You're in here, I'm going to have passion. Most people agree with this, but not because they know about the water.
Ms. Dally, please, thoughts on this, staying ahead of the curve on infrastructure?
Yeah, I think it's something I definitely don't know a lot about, except for that I love to listen to the experts. I don't think it's something that the city councils, that we know and can control. But if we listen to those experts as they come in, then we can get better ideas and ways to move forward. I think it's our responsibility to, you know, provide a future for our children and everyone else in the valley, that we'll be sustainable. And then they can, they'll come from the, I'm sure they're going to have a clean community, you know, in the future as well. And so personally, we know those, you know, resources are finite. I know there are plans. I know we have a water plan. I know we have, you know, electrical plan or power plan. I would like to see the power plan be a little bit more diverse, besides just being, you know, water or whatever. I think we can look into other options and, you know, water and other plants. And so I'm willing to look and listen and see what needs to happen.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens, please.
I'm going to pass on that. You guys heard me ramble like, we need to go find power. And I think, I love the power guys, we're going to find it, we're going to, we're going to find it. I don't think anyone actually here is worried about us finding the power. We need to find it. I go find the power, but I don't think we talked about it.
Okay. Maybe a couple 30-second follow-ups with Lee Coven and Mr. Lopez.
I would also say that we have an amazing opportunity at improving our conservation efforts, both for water and for power. And I would hope that as we have a better understanding of how impactful we can be as consumers and following some conservation guidelines that we can all agree on, that are in the best interest of our community and our city, I think we'll be able to do even more than we're currently doing.
What have we talked about, Ernesto? The megawatt that we don't use, the cheapest one that we buy.
Along those lines, a couple of things that I'll just throw out for anyone to respond to, and just kind of a short, pissy response. Is there a dichotomy between saying conservation has to be the strategy, or generation of new resources is the strategy, or is this an all about, all about strategy for you? What are your thoughts there?
I just, I think it's a diversity of, I mean, anytime you have a diverse portfolio that is looking both forward and trying to be, you know, 50 years forward, 10 years forward, et cetera, I think that's the smartest way to go. In terms of, just to piggyback on some things I want to add related to conservation also. And listen, the general plan also, but I had reached out to Park and Rec a while ago to ask, you know, with some of our parks, what kind of recourse systems are we using? When I, if I see sprinklers going when it's raining, and it doesn't rain all that often here, I'm kind of baffled by that. And like, there's good technology. And I know they've been trying to work on and, you know, changing those up. But I ask those questions because improving some of that sort of infrastructure, that sensing things to mitigate and minimize watering when we can, as well as in our parks, thinking about, you know, if you've got 20 acres, are there sections of that park around trees or around, I don't know where it is, but that could be well-watered or USH, where we can pull out some areas and pull out some sprinklers. And, you know, Logan could say, hey, can we set a goal of X percent? And people agree on it, and obviously get those neighbors involved, so we're not pulling grass up. And they're like, no, that's where we play this game, or whatever. And what's with the neighborhood plans? I think those are ways. Porta Strip is one, an incentive plan we talked about in our neighborhood and tried to get going. So there's things like that we can offer.
One other thing I'll throw out, maybe if anyone has a quick response, this may be a little bit, I'm putting on my nerdy professor hat. The state legislature in our 2025 legislative session passed a piece of legislation that requires cities to adopt tiered water rates and to adopt at least one conservation measure as part of their community's water plan. Anyone want to throw something out there that you would suggest? Logan may already meets the standard, by the way, with the things that are in place. Anything you'd want to throw out there that you would recommend? Not necessarily you're saying this has to be done, but something worth looking into. Mr. Stevens?
One.
Right? Oh, tiered water rate, just very, thank you for that clarification. It means that the more you use, the higher the rate per gallon you pay. So if you only use 8,000 gallons per month at your house, then you might pay $3 per gallon, per thousand gallons. If you kick it up to using 20,000 gallons per month at your residence, that next 12,000 gallons costs you $5 per 10,000 gallons instead of three, so that the water is priced to incentivize conservation. Thank you for that clarification. I should have brought one of you guys in today, that's why I was like, gee.
But I introduced the rebel in me and tweaked that just a little bit. So my favorite memory growing up was floating the upper canal out of Logan Canyon through the golf course. And in the name of conservation, they piped that and shut it off. And now they want to do that in Logan River, and they want to do it up near Hennan. And.
No, that's not the plan.
This is true. This is all part of the river. We've got my whole navy freaking out because they want to pipe it up there.
If you look at the plan, Brian, it's nothing about piping.
They're not giving you the accurate information on that.
There's not a single part of that plan, because I'm on the water district.
Do you know how many protests there are?
I know.
The pipe in the Logan River.
There's a bit of misinformation, yeah.
Do you know Johnny? Do you know Johnny B? How?
I've talked to Johnny.
They're putting pipes in the river.
Not, they're not piping the river, so.
Hey, you heard it, the group law is not on the table, so.
That's not a recommended solution.
I'm not recommended, I'm holding it true.
It is not on the table, not on the table. However, in that plan, there is a concession for possibly getting secondary water for the entire western part of Logan. So if you go from two hundred east all the way west, you would be able to pipe and pressurize secondary water for all of our citizens to tie in.
They're just piping in the river, they're piping it. He said no piping in the river, he said piping.
Not piping the river, they're diverting the water into the canal, which will be diverted into the pressure system, which will pressurize the water. But then everyone, instead of having a water bill that's a hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars, you pay thirty dollars a month for your secondary water.
Secondary water from the plant.
Secondary water is the plant.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so it's like, I find that to be very exciting.
Totally.
And also if we could just like partner with the High Line Canal Company and get that for the rest of the city, what a boom that would be for our city because this is, this is untreated, this is secondary water.
But you know what, you know what the problem? The problem with that is, have you ever seen guys that have, uh, secondary water that's unmetered? There's no conservation or not whatsoever, it's gonna all be metered.
All be meters. What about all the secondary, like eight miles metered?
Yeah, but it's not here, they're.
Not up there.
Would you?
It could be, it could be, yeah, it could be, but, but we know a secondary water system, meters, we can actually tell how much people are using and the price would be a fraction of what you're paying for water right now. And it would save our water source for drinking water, which is way more critical than irrigation.
Quick clarification for the audience, secondary water, well, and you tell a lot of people from, I mean, the water's just coming out of the river, the spring, wherever else it's coming from, saves a little bit of money, uh, because it is not, uh, it doesn't have to go through purification, coronation, any of the other kinds of things, uh, that, that makes drinking, and, and you can use different conveyance systems because it doesn't have to be potable for, for drinking purposes. So, uh, please, Mr. Lopez.
Just back to your original question, um, I think for me, the tiered system seems like a great way to go. I think people, you know, should really be built for what they use. Um, and so I think that's a great natural way to control how much water people use. Um, and I also think there can be incentive programs like that, Fort the Strip. However, I would like to see it done in the right way so that it's not just turning into weeds. Um, yeah, so there's gotta be some incentives as well to provide that, you know, instead of having grass, you have something else that is not just gonna be weeds.
To the record, to the record, I, I, go, go ahead. I gotta say, I, I strongly disagree with that secondary system. Just to the record, but in the interest of good dialogue, I won't, I won't continue the question.
Man, I can pick up our conversation later.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I don't wanna find you.
And I love more, I love more. So, thank you for doing that. Civil dialogue doesn't mean we don't disagree. It means to do so civilly and respectfully what you've just done and draw contrast so the voters have a good sense of what's happening. Thank you for taking a moment to convey that. I, my job is not to say one position or the other is correct, it's just to let you guys lay out what your positions are. Thank you. Um, I promise, we're, we're getting on, uh, to almost eight twenty, which means we're getting close to a point where she, uh, did it. I wanna talk briefly about how to get the public involved in this planning process and what each of you sees as the role of the public in this planning for housing, infrastructure and the like. Uh, we've seen in, in the instance of Canyon Road, a lot of interest from people being involved. So sometimes we have to help that, but it's, I've, I've heard other people say that the timing is important for that involvement. So, uh, many of you have alluded to the importance of planning. Um, how do you get folks to come and be involved? How do you get them, what is the right timing on which citizens should be involved? How do you encourage people to do that and to do it in successful, positive ways that benefit the community? Oh goodness, Ernesto, we're only on our third fresh start of the evening. Uh, but if you'd like to take a shot at that first.
Yeah, I think, um, regarding those two things, the, the timing and the actual planning, I, I, there's gotta be a good balance of how much time, too much time. Because if you start too soon, when there is not enough information, that it would be valuable for the citizens to hear and, and would create, uh, misinformation or, uh, opportunities for, for somebody to challenge something that is not even really there. I think that's hard. Uh, so I think finding that balance of when we have enough information, that it is something that people should give, uh, valuable input to them, that would be great. Uh, I, I would advocate that, that we have as many sessions, information sessions as possible, that would help us guide our, our, our guiding documents that we're preparing for general plans, for neighborhood plans, for infrastructure plans. Um, I think, instead of, well, in the time that I've been in the city council, I always taken very seriously the plans that we are basing our decisions on. And, uh, I think they are, so much of those goes into them and I, I value them highly.
Thank you. Uh, I almost said just silly, miss.
Sorry, it's okay.
This is a slogan, uh, you just described.
Yeah. Sorry, it works, it is, uh, happy. Well, good, that's the point, right? Um, my other thing is communication. I mean, I think a lot of the citizens within our city are frustrated. I know there's a fine line of bringing it up too early, but I also think our community has a lot to say. And I think it's good to open it up and get their feedback as well, um, in the beginning stages of the planning. Because when you can take that feedback and then hopefully guide you, you know, in that certain direction. Um, I know they do that with UDA, I've been on committees with them that I've talked about a corridor, you know, going along the east side. And they're like, just think outside the box, think of anything possible and then let's narrow it down. And I don't think that's a bad way to go. And so my goal would be to listen to everybody, provide a way. Um, I think we need a PR person in the, in the city that knows how to bring people out and talk to them. I think surveys are great, however, I think surveys can be misleading. You wanna be the PR person, Josh?
Yeah.
Um, but I, I do think surveys can be misleading. And I, you know, think, again, they should be structured in a way that we can get true feedback and information from our community.
It's very interesting, in fact, I think Marco Navas will actually kind of, uh, discuss a little like, maybe there is a need for a PR person in, in the city. Uh, yes, yeah, and so, yes, I agree.
I, when I chaired the Hillcrest Neighborhood, I asked the city to, um, subscribe for, I mean, it costs probably fifty dollars a month for the city to, uh, for a newsletter, an email software, so that all of the neighborhoods and the mayor's office can, um, build email lists and start communicating with our neighbors. Because communication was the main reason I, um, offered to, um, get involved with the Hillcrest Neighborhood and I think I made headway. There's still a lot, there's still a lot more to be done there. Only so many people are gonna sign up for it now that I felt like that was something. Um, and, and, you know, everyone, we, we, we could allow their information in the Herald Journal. And, uh, so this is really interesting, when I moved to Logan, um, twelve years ago, someone said, oh, they're gonna do a story in the Herald Journal, you know, with your job. And, and I was like, oh, and I was like, people read the paper here? And I was like, oh my gosh, I, they should do it. And so, um, but your point about a PR person, it should, you know, it's incumbent upon the Herald Journal journalists to be following, that's just their job. But when you have a PR person, they're also out there thinking about what is the message and the information that we should be sharing. And you can sometimes get ahead of that. And so I think those are, those are all.
Mr. Stevens, uh, let's, let's keep Brian's shot.
I, I just wanna make a point, one hundred percent of the time when we bump into a problem, it's always, always, I feel like they've made the decision without me. And so to the point that, oh, we don't wanna get them involved because they're not smart enough to make their own decisions or to be involved with us. No, with me, we're gonna know. And it's not gonna be any bathroom deal, hey, we all got together and made a deal and, and let you out of it, now it's, we're going through the motions and the public notices so that, you know, they cover our backs legally. No, that won't happen, you're gonna know. And I don't care if someone's yelling at me day one, like, not, all you guys are smart enough. Like, hey, I wanna hear the information. And it does not change my ability to make a decision, having everyone involved right at the beginning. It's, it's, that's just not a factor in my mind.
But how, how early is, is the right?
It's not too early. Hey, I'm thinking about spending a hundred and thirty million, uh, dollars on a new water tank and then piping it down the stream and we're already done it, now we're hoping, now that's not, that's way too early.
So that's a perfect example because the city went to the neighbors before we even hit ten percent planning with, with the Canyon Road.
Maybe you should have gone to the beginning. What about, what about, that starts the beginning? My, my good friend sent me an email tonight and he's like, he talked to everyone on the council about the rec center deal and he's like, they made up their mind and not one of them responded, including you. And I, I responded to every single person that, that, that emailed me about the rec. I'm just telling you, I, I don't need to attack, I'm, I'm making the point, it's not true. It's not true.
So, so with the Canyon Road project, and, but, as, as soon as the city identified that that's probably the location that that pipe needed to go because they had a lot of options. And to begin with, they were supposed to be on the bluff, uh, uh, across the street, behind your house is where it was supposed to go. But then we made a, a really great opportunity came up with USU to be able to put that tank over on the other bluff on the other side. So basically, as soon as they realized that that's where the pipe was gonna go, yeah, arbers come in and check the trees and see how it was going. And then right after we got that information, we went right to the neighbors. I mean, they had, they had barely put like a couple lines on the map of where it was gonna be.
This is the part.
This is the part that, that like we didn't grow up soon enough. And I'm just like, okay, we were in a ten percent design and we went to the neighborhood, how could we have gone earlier?
I tell you, because you, you just said a key word there, you said, once we knew the pipe was going in, then we went to the neighbors. And I'm saying, I don't believe we knew the pipe.
You don't think we need a pipe at all?
No. Yeah, not, not a fifty foot concrete pipe that destroys that street and a, you know.
You don't think we need the size of the pipe that is being rendered?
No.
And is the size of the pipe recommendation coming from?
That is, to, like, that's coming actually from engineers that are doing the projects. With that ten million gallon tank, you gotta get water to the other side of the city. You gotta get water, I was thinking, you gotta get water over riverside. And we're trying to like.
It's a pressure problem.
It's not, it's not a water problem, it's a water pressure problem.
Let's put the tank on the west side of town in a landfill, a hundred feet in the same elevation, the pressure.
But you have to pump it.
But that, but that, no, put it in the air, we, we got two hundred million people that live across.
You would have to pump it up to the sea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but, but it's not gonna cost you.
It's gonna cost, it's not gonna cost you. But it's gotta be.
It will cost you a tenth of what you're spending.
But it's not gonna fix the problem in Quickside.
Quickside doesn't have a problem.
They do, they do.
I live on Quickside and I don't have a problem.
But they do have a problem, Quickside has a problem.
I live in Quickside and I don't have a special problem.
And we need that, we need that water pressure on the east side as much as we.
No, we have a water pressure problem on the west side because we put a tank, not you guys, but someone put a tank five hundred feet up on the cliff and that's why we gotta build a ten million gallon tank right below your house. And we're trying to regulate the pressures and everybody's throwing up their pressure on the west side of town.
At least it's not going to destroy your house.
Can I ask a question now, like, you say you went to the.
My house, so.
You say you went to the citizens' ten percent into the planning process, however, you'd already made up your mind that you're gonna take it down Canyon Road.
No, it hadn't been decided.
Then.
And you had, you had, probably the most likely location because they hadn't decided.
Because of the location, so they thought that was the only option. Like, so they told.
Well, once you look at.
This is the cost of a tower, this is the cost of going the further way, this is, I mean, they told, was that?
Put a tower on the west side of town, it's gonna flood on the east side of the car.
Maybe this quarter because I'm just throwing off of somebody else's information. However, there were three different people that bid on that, so three different engineering groups that bid on that. And they all had different plans. And they chose to go with J U B's plan because it seemed like it was gonna be.
Who chose to go with J U B's plan?
The administration, no.
Oh, the administration.
Administration decided, so.
For me, I, um, I, I don't wanna back away from the issue of the water and the pipe, but what I do care about and I'm intrigued by, which is why I was trying to. It's that communication because there are times when the city does it well, like, and I, and I say that for like, you know, we did the public art plan and we had a, a, and I feel like the general plan, they've done a very good job. If you look at the numbers of people and engagement and the time like.
How many people participate.
And the participation and the way in. And so where, where is it where we do it well and when is it where not doing well? And what and how, and, and there's the perception reality component to that too. And I'm just telling you that because I think that's a pretty part of it.
It's basically so difficult because everyone consumes information in a different way. Whether they read the newspaper or they listen to the radio or they watch TV or they use TikTok or they use Facebook or they, they actually read an email or they read a text. And you've got ten different ways to communicate with people and they all basically use one of those ten.
But it's a responsibility to both sides and those ten ways to try to fit everybody.
Information out to everybody because there's ten different ways that people consume.
And if we had a PR person, they would know how to do that.
My original point is, is only to the communication of the people frustrated because they feel their decisions were made before they were involved. And so they couldn't be involved.
Well, but I think this is not unique to Logan. I mean, as a state, as a county, um, I don't think government agencies, municipalities are great at communication. And so, um, then you get a vacuum of voice, you know, that feels that in other ways.
It's a fair minimum of what is required.
And so, and I think there again, though, this is where, I mean, really, we can actually figure this out. We could do a better job with this, um, because it is a manageable amount, it's like, you know, I, I wouldn't wanna fob that, but like, you know, but, um, but I think that there are a lot of ways that we can, and I, to your point though, um, there are so many ways people receive information. It is that much more challenging today than it was twenty years ago to share information and what that mechanism is for, you know.
But there are programs available that out there that will just distribute that talent. And so I think that the city is a little bit behind on.
Yeah, the people don't send an email. I, because I know people that they won't look at a text, but they'll read an email.
Yeah.
And by, they don't read an email, they'll read a text. And some people, their whole communication system is on TikTok. You know, it's like, so you, you have to have the ability to communicate in all those different ways. And every message has to have the same message, but it has to be communicated in different ways. It's, it's a difficult job and it's one that we do every single day in our business because we're trying to reach all those same people and it is a challenge. It is a challenge.
Just wanted to say that, um, I think the nature of the matters also creates this sometimes perception that it was not timely enough, it was too late. Uh, I think when, when something that impacts our street versus a video that was gonna be somewhere downtown, it will make a difference on, on the, the perception that it's too late, uh, and so.
But I think we all have time.
So I think that makes the nature of the matter happen frequently a lot, uh, the, the perception of the timeliness and how much input you, you gather to, to do that. Uh, I think, uh, the mayor, uh, did a great job at implementing some of our feedback that we gave her recently to increase communication. And I, I, I think our administrations were doing that.
Uh, we got to module two, uh, question three or four. So that was, uh, 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 but, but the reason why is that these are difficult problems that require lots of minds, uh, to sit down, work through the problem systematically, try to come up with, uh, with what is best for the people. for the people of Logan. Thank you for your, uh, work in modeling those kinds of discussions, uh, this evening. Uh, we need to go to our closing statements, so we can be somewhat close to the time, uh, that we indicated to folks that they would wrap up. Uh, we'll complete closing statements in the same order that we did opening statements, so the, the person who has the last word on opening, uh, is not the person who, you know, is the first at the, at the ending, so that order will be, uh, first, Katie Lee Cohen, uh, then Brian Seemis, Melissa Dally, Ernesto Lopez, Mark Anderson, and then I'll share just a couple of closing thoughts. Uh, but we'll do two minutes on those closing statements, and, uh, I, I invite you to stand, uh, again, to share those thoughts in the evening, in the first bit.
Well, I'll stand, but I'm gonna make a quick, because we've already taken up a good portion of your evening, and I hope that, um, some of the things that we shared are informative and, and helping you think about your vote. Um, again, I guess I would just remind you that, um, in my, my daytime job, I, um, I have to think about a lot of the things that I think, um, translate in various ways, um, to serving our city council, and, and it's been honestly such a pleasure, um, for me to serve, um, as the Hillcrest Neighborhood Chair on the Planning Commission, and, um, on the Mural Committee. We have a lot of public art in our city now, and we did it, I, just a short time ago, and that's exciting to me. Um, but the reasons that I enjoy it is, are the people. Um, and so I hope, if given the opportunity to serve you, um, that you will voice your concerns and share those with me, because the purpose of serving on the city council is to serve you, and I'm here to work for you, and, um, so thank you again for your time tonight.
Mr. Stevens. Oh, thank you for coming tonight. I sure appreciate this opportunity, um, and I'll, I'll tell you that this, um, I'm extremely passionate, you obviously saw that, um, about the issues in Logan, I know them deeply, I know most of our city staff, um, by name, I spend a lot of time with them all, I know the issues, um, and I'm just gonna advocate one more issue that's important to me, um, that we need to take care of, other than I'm gonna save you a lot of money, and I'm gonna fight like that to save you that money, uh, because my voice matters, your money matters, and it's not limited, I don't care who it is, I'm gonna fight for your money, but our blue collar people need to be taken better care of, and our police officers need to be taken better care of, and I would be relentless in sticking up for the little guy, um, and it will not be too soon for you to know. Uh, you're smart enough to know, the minute we start thinking of that, I, I just passionately disagree with that. I'm gonna save your money, I'm gonna take care of the blue collar guy, and the police officers, and I'm gonna let you know what's going on, and we won't make deals behind your back. Thank you.
Again, like I said, thank you for coming out tonight, I appreciate all of your support. Um, I look forward to supporting you if I can get votes in, and my other thing, as we can tell, is communication. I feel like talking to our community and everyone that is a citizen here in Logan City will help, um, provide that bond that we need. I think people feel a little bit lost right now, and I hope to do that, person that can listen and hear you, and hopefully implement some ideas that come to us, um, as we move forward. So, um, I just hope that you remember these things tonight, you know, now that, I, I know in the past that I said a lot about, you know, being in support for a rec center, um, we didn't get to talk about that tonight, but I do strongly believe in providing, um, relationships so that we can feel like we are a community, whether that be with our schools, um, or with the city offices, and, or with the rec center, you know, providing programs that bring people together. So, again, don't delay, vote for those. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for coming out, for staying engaged in, in this democratic process. It's been an incredible privilege to serve Logan, uh, in this capacity for the last, uh, five years, and look forward to, um, earning your trust when your vote is coming November fourth, and, uh, I look forward to, um, competing to represent you and other underrepresented groups of our community, and I, and I hope that, uh, we can all work together forever, just to be in the council. If it's not me, I will look for another way to serve our community. Thank you so much, appreciate it, and, and vote, give a vote.
Today, I was at a conference in Salt Lake, and I talked to city managers and, and city employees there, and I talked to our city recorder, and across the state, there are a lot of cities and employees that are worried about their elections. They are concerned about some of the people that are running and that might be elected, and how much disruption, and how much contention there is going to be in their city, it is a concern. You look at these people up here, I would be honored and delighted to work with each and every one of them. They are outstanding people that deserve your vote, and I, I would, I would highly recommend every single one of them, and I would be happy to work with them if I were to be elected mayor. I mean, I, I know every one of them really well, I just got to really know Katie a lot better, we have a lot in common. I thought that was really cool, that we were able to go have breakfast together, and we got to find out that we really do have a lot in common. Brian, I've been bugging him to run for a while, so, uh, we might contend a little bit, I love Brian, he has got so much energy.
We have these kind of discussions that are...
I, I love Brian, and he's got so much energy, and he will work really hard for you. Ernesto, I still say, Ernesto is the best decision that the Logan City Council made since I've been on there for six years, of picking him to fill, uh, an empty spot. It was so important to, to get that voice and to get that perspective that we did not have. Thank you, Tom, because you were on there, you were on there as well, too. And Melissa, I've been able to work with her a little bit on Parks and Rec, I've been able to work with her, uh, the first time in a very contentious situation with a development in, in her neighborhood, and we talked, and I told her my perspective, and she told me her perspective, and I think we really worked together, and I think we came up with a really great solution that not everybody was happy with, but it was a really great, it was a really great resolution for, for two sides that didn't wanna work together. And, and in this conference that I was at today, one of the things that was said, that, that we are incapable as a country right now to compromise, we are incapable of compromise, because each side has to be right, and, and the only way you come up with really good solutions is if you find that compromise, because that's where the best solutions come from. One side does not have all the answers, it is that, is that compromise and working together to find a solution that works for the most people. We're not always gonna get what we want. I talked to Mayor Davis the other day, and I said, even when you're mayor, you don't get what you want, you don't always get what you want, the key is finding that, that compromise that's gonna work for the most people. And so my, my personal mantra is, I wanna find the best solution with the least impact for the least amount of people, but with the greatest good, it's gonna last the longest. And, and those are the goals that I want to work on if I'm elected mayor, is to find those solutions and to find those compromises that are gonna provide the least impact for the least amount of people, to provide the most good for our community for the longest amount of time. Get out there and vote, and make your mark for mayor, thanks for coming tonight.
Hey, can I just say, thanks, all of us, thanks to Mark, he, he kind of was the catalyst to those two, thank you.
Thank you.
Best of that this evening, there is, is much more to learn and discuss, but it's been a good evening. Thank you again to the folks of the Utah Theater for providing the facility, a huge thanks to the Chamber of Commerce, uh, for helping to make this possible, thank you to the candidates for being part of this. Now, the work is yours. Thank you for being engaged, thank you for being here tonight to be a part of important decisions in this community, and please go on November fourth. Thanks, and have a good evening.
Breaking news and stimulating talk, KVNU six ten AM and one oh two point one FM.